Just like Florida. I've been asked to say this. And it's really important for the wish to say this, one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We're calling meeting to order on November July twenty ninth. Um, we are being recorded by both the one media center, we are also, we want to put the schools, we are also on Zoom. So first things up, and in the air fiscal twenty four budget update from the Mississippi.
Okay, so um, what I think right was the um, there's nine support, we got full expenditure and the final year end um, expansion plan. Um, as along with expansions that were very small, they're the um, well, good grant and um, the next was uh, Uh, we ended this this year down uh, two hundred eighty one thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars and that was in our thirty one. And we've seen last no more on that Friday that is for that this time, um, that was due on Tuesday, Saturday. Um, yeah, the question is, I also have a group to um, to the fact that I've gone through the following grant on accounting as well.
The questions are part of twenty four. Um, since the train project obviously, so we turned back. Two hundred eighty one, three hundred and two hundred and two thousand dollars, um, that was back to the tap, I know, yeah. Do we know savings from train projects? I know it's probably a little soon, just well, I know, but like it's supposed to be a few times to pass savings and kind of what's that looking like?
Um, so although it was saved in their mind, then you were all from the project and all that from. Some of some of what we just started to see, solar expenses, um, those would just be the small amount, um, some period of checks. That turned back for that down and then the other was on the bill and then she cut it so that we were getting for another project. So the rest of that's been, nothing's changed, it was quite good, but um, there'll be even without being um, a lot.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the beginning of the month, month before I have this, moving budget for five hundred and twenty one thousand. And we uh, only spent three hundred forty three thousand. So is that kind of safe to say that you're looking at give or take print map? Well, you know, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars would save ten. Yeah, I lost response.
Yes. And so all of the money that you see there, that two hundred eighty one thousand, almost two hundred eighty two, that was all came out of our utility line expenses that we over budgeted for and saw the savings. So it's definitely, um, of course, will vary year to year based on actual needing employing means, recruiters, et cetera. Um, but we weren't able to find our help.
Just for I think public consulting, we did, we uh, we're budgeting for thirty seven point seven, I'm sorry, thirty four point seven million dollars. We spent thirty three point nine million dollars, we left there, there's two hundred eighty one thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars on staff, just dropped that down. For FY twenty four. Questions, comments? Definitely five.
Okay, um, so I shared with the committee a few items for tonight, um, number one was. Um, the staff reduction sheet that was shared pretty publicly, uh, leading up to the override vote a few weeks ago in July. Um, these were the twenty nine positions that were eliminated in order for us to meet the one percent budget allocation. Uh, since that time, we have recalled two paraprofessionals based on student need and um, programming needs. Um, so that brings that twenty nine number down to twenty seven. Um, for those in the audience, um, and at home, I'll read these again, uh, the twenty, the positions are the production of a guidance counselor at Norton High School. A, a nurse that was um, called the district nurse, but really was providing services to all five buildings. Music teacher at Norton Middle School, the elimination of middle school oral language F two teachers. An English teacher at Norton Middle School, a math teacher at Norton Middle School, a reading interventionist at Yale School. Two elementary math interventionists, the art teacher at Norton Middle School. Two instructional technology specialists, the elementary math coach, the elementary literacy coach, preschool teacher. A science teacher at Norton High School, social studies teacher at Norton High School, music teacher at one of, one of two music teachers at Norton High School. A wellness teacher at Norton High School, a speech and language pathology assistant that was a point four position. Two custodians, the middle school dean and JCS. Additionally, uh, for elementary specialists, we reduced elementary art by point one two. Elementary scheme by point three two, elementary library by point four and elementary music by point two. Uh, so those were all of the cuts that had been made, um, they were made previous to the override vote, um, because of our contractual obligations. Um, but we will not be recalling those staff positions. The next, um. Piece of information that I shared with all of you are the staffing changes that have had since our May town meeting. Um, and I think it's important for you to all know that since I shared this with you about twenty four, you know, forty eight hours ago, we've had two other changes. Um, so we are at a total of four retirements since our town meeting. A total of eight resignations. Um, three staff members that have decided to um, do a um, full time equivalent change. So for example, um, we have a fifth grade teacher that's going to be job sharing, a science teacher at the high school that's going to be job sharing. So those positions are going from a one oh to a point four and then we will backfill the other side of their position. Um, and then, um, I apologize, this is an error, we have two reasons absences since. The fall town meeting, that art teacher we already knew about and had budgeted for, so I apologize, that was my error. Um, and then the third thing that we have for you is the savings on all of these positions. So it's not quite totally up to date at this point, um, because as I said, we just got those, you know, other two in the last, you know, two days or so. Um, but at this time, taking a look at staff members that have resigned or retired and then backfilling those roles. Um, as needed, we're looking at a savings of a hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred sixty two dollars.
So based on changes since town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Basically focusing on retirements and resignations, how many of those spots?
So we've been kind of backfilling them as, as they've happened, uh, so on the third sheet that you have for tonight, you can see the first. Um, staff member was the high school guidance counselor, the person that left was leaving at eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. We hired a new guidance counselor at fifty six thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars, which is a savings of twenty four point three. Um, and we have, um, we've rehired the school psychologist at the middle school, um, the brick classroom teacher at JCS. The language based classroom at JCS, a grade one, um, position at JCS. An English teacher retirement at the middle school, an English teacher retirement at the high school. Um, and then those last two are the job sharing, so as you can see, having somebody um, in a job share position. Or now only paying a point four, there's still a savings because we're hiring somebody that has less experience or brand new to the district at that time. Um, so that's how we get up to that one hundred and seventy six. We will be posting or actually, um, in one case, recalling a staff member that was laid off. Um, due to a retirement that has just come up over the weekend, um, so that will be somebody that we're able to recall. It's important for people to know it is not a new position, they are, we are not bringing them back because we found money, we're bringing them back if someone else decided to leave. So one for one, exactly, um, and then we will be looking at options for the resi- the resignation that took place at Norton High School. Um, and we're actually looking at the way that our staffing is, is going to send some options to be for potentially filling the hole in another school to, um. Make that the difference.
Questions, comments? The witch, where are current?
Um, give me one second. So as of right now, we will have a. Um, the amazing Mrs. Anna Anderson is extremely organized and she's got this awesome spreadsheet for, for everything she color coded. We can see exactly who was coming and who was going and who these stuff would work on here. Alright, um. We are still looking. Um, you're working on a, um. Still looking at a point six L teacher. We are still looking at, um. An inclusion teacher at JCS, a long term subposition at JCS, kindergarten teacher at JCS. And then we will be looking at a social studies position add-on. That is one of the most recent, um, changes. And this happens every summer, this is not strange or unusual, people have, um, family commitments that change. People go on vacation and say, this is really awesome, I think I'm gonna retire. And it truly happens, and you know what, if you have the ability to do it, pray to hope for it, um, it, it truly does happen every single year. So this is, and this is how we are able to make changes every. A hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, it's not three point seven million, but it will give us a little bit of flexibility if we need to make some changes. Or if we have a student need that comes in and we're able, you know, to hire a professional or for something along that. Um, so this number will change, Christine and I will continue to keep you updated on those savings as they come in. I only anticipated that number increasing over the next several weeks. Um, and I really am hopeful that we will be able to say that we have all of our staffing in place for, um, September third, questions?
Out of curiosity, do, is there like an average of? Like retirements and resignations over the summer? Yeah, usually it's like twenty or maybe?
It's really hard to, um, some years are, are more than others, I, I think, um. I fully anticipated seeing a lot of people moving this summer, only because, um. We do have a number of staff members that are right at that point where they either have another year or another two years. And sometimes when you see a financial situation and the writing's on the wall, it's, you say, you know what? Now's a, now's a good time, that's for me. Um, we do have some younger staff that have found positions in other communities, um, and I also think for them. Going somewhere where you feel you're going to be a little bit more secure versus having a life house kind of hanging over your head. It, it's a job security thing for people, and if you're just like a new home or you're, you know, just starting a family, that job security shouldn't. So it's not surprising, I don't think it's totally off the charts, out of the ordinary at this point. Um, I just, I feel like we had a list from last year, like this doesn't seem. I don't know, I feel like this would be a typical number.
Yeah, I, I would say right now, it's, I'd say it's pretty typical at this point, um, this is. If I were to show you all of, all of the changes, like this person moved to this role and this person moved to this role and, I mean, that's, that would, that's. It's got like eighteen different colors going on over here and you gotta drop down some spreadsheets and it's. I tried to make it as simple as I could, for you guys to even really see what those changes are and what the changes are that impact see. That we did not anticipate because they have all come ready since the middle.
So out, out of curiosity. When we look at a staff member leaving, what's the time where it's like a resignation versus a retirement? You have to qualify with so many years for.
Yes.
What's that, is it twenty?
It depends, it depends on whether or not you were hired before or after, I think it's two thousand twelve. Um, in order to be appropriately vested into the retirement system. Um, maximum retirement available to educators and masterpieces is eighty percent. In order to reach eighty percent, your years of service and your age have to add to ninety. So.
Someone that starts like later in my, my side of career.
Yes. They would need to do at least twenty years in order to be considered vested into the retirement system. Um, at the max, I mean, you can obviously retire it. You can, but, um, in order to get, get retirement plus you have to give twenty years of service. And in terms of resignation, most often those people are leaving us to go somewhere else or leaving the career.
A lot of comments concerned. I have a few, um. Uh, alright, so. So we went from twenty nine positions on the set. What positions even with four, six and a half, we're involved, one come back and it's three, right?
It was the guidance counselor at Norton High School. The preschool teacher.
The best.
Yeah. And I believe the speech and language assistant at the point one. Those were those three positions that regardless of what happened, we did not recall, those people. And that's, and that's simply due to, um, changing in programs, enrollment. Uh, we didn't have enough students that were required that best program preschool, so therefore we didn't necessarily need that person in that role. Um, or we didn't have, you know, the speech and language pathology assistant, we have a certified SLP that's able to pick up that preschool. Um. I mean, obviously, if you had the money and you could switch out that role for something else. That's always a great opportunity to be able to, um, to change some of our programming, but those three positions do not have been recalled for that.
Uh, and then. Just kind of, what, since probably town meeting, that much, but on three twenty day, we all have a study.
Mm-hmm.
That kind of had, that is, the one percent budget, two percent budget, the override went through, four million dollars, and it kind of went. Basically from my understanding, two, four, I think, six, seven, that we were kind of gonna work the bottom to the top.
Mm-hmm.
If we do it to a weak state, so for one percent, we're gonna bring back these two percent, you're gonna put back, you know, three, seven, whatever you want to do. So we're gonna be, what's looking like, probably getting a hundred and four dollars per person, which are per pupil. Uh, from the state, I know sitting on a government's desk right now, we don't have that number exactly, you know, done. That's gonna give us an extra seventy four dollars per student, and that's our twenty four hundred we're looking at.
One sixty five, one sixty eight, yes.
No, two.
That's the total. So we've already budgeted the thirty dollars per student, that's already in the budget, so we would take this, we would take the seventy four. Instead of the one, so I think it's one sixty, one sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and two.
Earliest we've had last year.
Yes, so, um. So just to kind of explain that to folks at home, um, currently, minimum eight is set at additional thirty dollars per student for the town. Um, they are looking to increase that to a hundred and four dollars per student, which is would be amazing, it would give us an extra, as Mr. Schlecker said, an extra seventy four dollars per student for us. Um, one of the things that we need to all be aware of is that that money is not guaranteed to the schools. We will need to go back at town meeting, um, and ask the town to vote to approve that one hundred and sixty thousand dollars coming to us as a part. It goes to the general fund, um, and so that would be a big benefit for us for you to do that, but we would not have access to those funds until after.
So hypothetically, print map, if we, this list stays the same, a hundred and seventy six thousand, plus we get the, the additional per pupil. We have three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars potential. Definitely, definitely, or something right now, thinking we potentially have one, but, but is that number, three hundred and thirty seven thousand, something that we didn't look at, shipping off some of these? Productions. But what, what's up, I guess, what's the plan for three hundred, what are we doing, three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, we're not gonna leave it in our budget, that's not gonna be.
Correct, I mean, three hundred and thirty seven dollars to you or I, if that showed up in our bank account, that's, that's a lot of money, right? Like, we would be, I would be psyched if that kind of money showed up in my account one day. Three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars to a district with a thirty four million dollar budget is not that much, it, it really truly isn't. Um, my number one priority is the school nurse, that sixth nurse. Um, one of the things that we've had conversations about over and over and over again is the number of medically fragile students that we have in our schools. Um, across the district, we have students that have feeding tubes that a nurse is required to help them with their feeding three to four times a day. That is an extremely complicated process, the nurse needs to be able to devote, to devote all of their attention to that child at that time. Um, and it's really difficult when you've got kids coming in and out, so that sixth nurse is someone who's able to really help with that. We also have a number of students in district that are diabetic, um, each of the school nurses that has a child, ID was in the building, has, um, an app. That they're constantly monitoring the sugar level with every single child. If the alarm goes off, they need to go and make sure that they're working with their child to help get their sugar levels back under control. Again, very serious, especially if it's your child that has this, you know, medical condition and we're, we're asking our school nurses to, um, feed them safe. While they're here, um, in our care. When you take a look at what the recommendations are for school nurses, um, across the Commonwealth, any, any school that has, um, more than five hundred students is recommended to have one, to have a second nurse. Um, so with automatically, high school and middle school, we should have a second nurse. Um, obviously, that's not in the course for us at this time, um, but that, those are some of the reasons why that nurse is, is my first priority. Um, additionally, and Mr. Cersei isn't here tonight, but, um. That nurse person, um, is sub coverage when, uh, one of our nurses falls out sick, they unfortunately do get sick as well, uh, they have a personal day. Uh, they, they are definitely working in a petri dish, um, in an elementary school, and as much as we think our immune system improves over time, it doesn't always. Um, they come in there, that first line of defense, well, we need, need a sub coverage for that nurse. Um, it's very difficult as a top of the chair, you have substitute nurses regardless of what we're paying them. Um, and then we could also consult with, um, or contract with an outside provider, provider, extremely sensitive. Um, so, and then the nurse also writes grants for us, they need new grants, those, that would be my first priority. And I believe that's about an eighty thousand dollar cost, so we said what, three thirty seven minus eighty, money goes back. Um, I'll be really honest, at this time, with only looking at three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars of potential savings. I would be extremely hesitant to bring back anyone. Um, for a few different reasons. Number one, um, I believe that we're going to have this exact same budget situation next year, and so we're bringing somebody back just to reclaim the money. Bringing back the staff member at town meeting time in late October, it's a difficult time to change school schedules, to change class sizes, to do any of those things. Um, so you'd be really looking at one of the positions that wouldn't necessarily impact the schedule or, or sizes, but would provide support to the building. Um, the middle school dean is a great example of that, I know, this, Mr. Hayward would probably, you know, fire his own mother to get, to bring that back there, um, and that would have a big impact. I'm very hesitant to do any of those things. Because we don't know what the year is going to be, we don't know if we'll have students that have, um, special education needs that will move into town or will be identified. Um, and it's, we, we joke about it because we can literally save twenty thousand dollars in the morning and spend fifteen now. It, it's, it's extremely, uh, fluid, the way a lot of our costs happen, um, so I would be very hesitant to say we're gonna bring back all of these things if we get the hundred and four dollars. One of the things we are looking at as we see these retirements and resignations, we've had a resignation at the high school this week. Um, that person's role is not a classroom teacher, um, but more of a specialized role. And we're looking at, okay, how can the administration that we have currently perhaps backfill some of that work? And therefore, free up that savings for us to say, you know what, if we're branded principal at JCS, it would really be great if we could find somebody who would just be an early childhood, who were neither there and just support his school. And could we do that by saving that role or not?
So you're meaning that admins can take on additional responsibility?
Correct, just checking, yeah, and I think, um. We're all very well aware of the additional responsibilities that we take on this year, um, today was the first day of our administrative retreat. Uh, when I say retreat, I think it's real important for everyone to know we were in the library at high school, we were not on the top of the hill, I live here anywhere really fun and exciting. Um, but all of our conversations today centered around student learning and how are we providing support and intervention access? We don't have interventionists, we don't have our coaches to help us look into. There will be things that the administrative team is taking on this year in order to make things, good things happen for kids, but there are also things that are just not going to happen. And I think that it'll be my responsibility to communicate that to all of you and say, we just can't, we step to the one. Um, of course, that we want.
I think it'd be important for you guys to do that because, like anything else, it just gets absorbed and then it's expected, yeah, to you, because we know a lot of, um. A lot of stuff that we have so many, we're so taught, right, with admins. So I think it's important to point out that you guys are taking on additional roles to try to keep our schools at a certain level that we've all come to expect. And like everything else, there, there comes burnout with that, and you take on more than really what you should be handling.
Um, and so Nick, I don't want you to think I'm not answering your question by spending the whole three hundred and thirty seven right here, I, I'm very hesitant to that. Um, just because we don't, we don't know what the year is going to be.
So I keep there too.
On any. And in fairness, the governor can approve the budget and if it comes to town meeting floor, and we still might, may not get that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so, um. Until it's sitting in our account, you know, I really. Or want to.
So.
You just don't know.
Again, since the March twenty eighth, when we went through. The wellness teacher at Norton High, that was on, that we got one percent, that was only reinstated. Yeah, stayed as a cut again, the math teacher at Norton Middle School was never on August. And JCS assistant principal, the child that no she was assigned, may, assuming JCS principal was replaced in Norton High School admin. Just kind of get a thought, since it's easy, uh, but I guess why would it look two slash three different?
So it really came down to trying to be as creative as we can about what our options are, so when you have an administrator resign, it's very easy to say, okay. Other people have contracts and potentially you'd be paying out someone who were the rest of their contract for dismissing. You don't wanna necessarily do that, you don't wanna pay someone and not get paid. So when an administrator resigns, it's easy to say, okay, we're not gonna back the letter, we're gonna hang on to whatever that salary was and hang on to that. Um, we were fortunate to have a very small cohort of fifth graders moving up to the middle school. And therefore, we looked at the model of instruction for Norton Middle School and said, okay, how can we get creative here? What is the certification of our teachers, how can we get creative here? And so now we're doing some cross teaming on grade six because the cohort is small. And therefore, we have a special education teacher who is also certified to teach math, has been coaching math for many years. She may, she will be teaching a section of math to sixth grade students. So we're trying to be really, really creative in terms of what could we allow? The wellness force at the high school has gone from a full year force down to a half year force. So instead of every freshman taking a full year wellness health class, they're only taking a half. And we are going to need to backfill some of those essential skills that they learned from the other half of that year throughout our curriculum at Norton Middle School.
I just don't why, what, what, I just don't understand how on late March, wellness teacher was part of one percent, that one percent of time. Question classes, and then we went cut the wellness teacher, we, we replaced that spot. We're still at, we're still, we're still at twenty nine, right, still at twenty nine positions, uh, frankly. We had twenty nine positions, but the wellness teacher was never on August. That's why I just, I don't understand how.
The list that I have from four twenty two, she, they were very much on that.
This is fucking awesome, because I had three twenty eight, it was the other six. That was, she was, or not, was a part of the one, that got one percent of town, that was going to be, that wasn't going to be.
Yeah, and so, I mean, there are other things we swapped too, um, so I'm looking back at the three twenty eight, Nick, we have either three twenty eight, a four four, a four eleven, a four twenty two. And they're all different iterations of the same thing. Um, we were going to be cutting a business teacher for inside of the wellness. And so we looked at our programming, the classes that we offer, the number of students that are involved in our DECA program, which is, you know, over a hundred and fifty students are involved in that program. And we said, we really don't have a class at this teacher. But if we move well of the health class or half year section instead of a full year section, we can make this up. Um, and I, and that's what I think, and I, um, I know that for those people who've been paying attention, they heard me say, I don't wanna name positions, I don't wanna tell, you know, that these are going to be the people that get laid off, number one, A, it's up there to my staff to find out that early and that publicly, um, but also things can change and laying off twenty nine people, it's very difficult to, none of these positions feel good. Like, I don't really feel good about any of this, even those two point four positions that we would have necessarily fallen. So finding not many people to cut and stay afloat.
And, and the other part of that is, it's not just twenty nine people that are fired because you have job bumping and things like that.
There was almost fifty people when all was said and done in terms of positions being eliminated, then bumping other people, moving to new roles, moving buildings.
So I did have one question for the early childhood coordinator. That will take out, take out the title of assistant principal and just early childhood coordinator. That's not necessarily an administrator level, that would just be kind of program directors, which could open up a different pool of that.
Potentially, yes, so having the role of J C S assistant principal slash early childhood coordinator, you were looking for someone who had an administrative license and administrative background that was able to not only, um, run the program, but also support discipline, evaluation, a lot of different things, and it's, um, a role that was extremely multifaceted and really needed the right person to be able to, to do that role because it was, it was so much. Um, if we were to take the high school position and that was recently, um, a resignation and say, okay, we wanna use that money instead with that, an admin that's gonna help us backfill here, we would rather hire an early childhood coordinator, that would be more of a program director, that person would work probably work here for a hundred and eighty two, they would probably work one ninety two or two oh two, they would not be a year round position, be more of a ten month position. Um, and someone who has experience with young children, who has experience with preschool program and the running of that. We might have a preschool teacher that says, you know, I'm, and throw their hand into the ring for that. Um, but that, we need to sit down and look at what the potential savings could be for that.
So do we, so that being said, that person's obviously attracted to the message. What do we miss one little bit?
Um, currently, uh, Mrs. Russo is, um, handling all of the little answers with help from Christine's office, dealing with all the finance and the tuition payments with help from Alex and Warren regarding transportation, um, and then like, that's really, Mr. Barrett is a brand new principal, he, he's not a brand new principal, he's brand new to us. Um, and, you know, started July one and is really coming in, getting settled, getting to know his staff. Um, he has, you know, an opportunity for staff to commit a meeting, which has been really great. Um, that position, if, if, if we sit down and, and, this is, is still, it, it just happened. So we would post for it, we would go out and hopefully that person would start, maybe we post for it. Um, but that would be something that we really have to look for financial access because the list that I gave you of savings does not include that.
No question. I think I just wanted to thank you for your optimism and your continued work, all of you, um, to keep our school district at a certain level, because I can tell you for me, it's tough sitting in this seat today. It is tough, my ninth year, this is real, this is tough. Sure, I just wanna thank you for all of you.
I, I think, um, my perspective, and I don't wanna speak for my team, is that we do everything we can every day to make sure our kids are safe and they have a great learning experience. And it's, it's going to be, um, a challenging year, but we have, um, we have a really great staff, we have really great teachers, we've got great families who are super supportive, um. My job is to run the school regardless of what the outcome is, and we're gonna do better.
So, thank you guys.
Not to skip, but trigger that, um, this is how you're about to be, do we have to go down either?
Um, that's the transfer season that end year. Great, thank you. Um, so last fall, we talked a lot about a district alignment, which we're going to look at. The school start end times, we were going to look at, um, the drawing of line between J C S and L G N, we're going to look at the configuration of our school. Um, number one, to see if we can make things a little bit more, um, strategically aligned, especially for J C S and L G N who have total opposite schedules. Um, and as much as it doesn't seem like that would be a big deal, it really truly is a big deal, uh, for a number of different reasons. Um, number one is that we have specific programs for students at J C S and other specific programs for students at L G N. And if a family has one child that needs to be at J C S and one child that needs to be at L G N, other than their program needs, those are very different schedules for families. Um, and also, families don't want to necessarily make those changes because they're established, they have the same time, they're, you know, their kids are on a, a, a team. Um, so that's something that we need to look at. The other thing is really around professional development and looking at student. Um, one of the most powerful tools that we have as educators is the ability to work and collaborate with our peers um, and share best practices. Um, I was a teach, teacher at J C S for a number of years and taught second grade. We were never able to get together with second grade teachers at L G N because they got out of two and we got out of three thirty, and very occasionally on a half day, we would get like an hour together, um, just because of contractual timing. And so, um, we don't have the budget, we're expensive professional development, and the federal grant applications are just going to, you know, get more and more tricky as the years go on, so using, being able to use that collaboration time is really the problem. We're also looking at the, um, districting and the alignment of schools in terms of grade levels. My recommendation, um, for this group is to focus solely on the school start time issue at this time. And the reason for that is, um, believe it or not, Norton actually has a ton of building happening. Um, I knew it was happening and then I put this little blurb together for you guys the other day and I thought, oh my gosh, this is even more than I thought. Um, all of which, these building projects have the potential to impact our schools. Um, one ninety five Mansell Ave, this is the new apartment complex called, uh, Norton Lakes. It's a hundred units, uh, scheduled to open this summer and fall. Um, of those one hundred units, there are ten three bedrooms, thirty one two bedrooms, those are families that are going to be moving in there. Um, and that has the potential to impact enrollment at J C S. We have the Wheeloff Farm Development, which is, um, right off of Pine Street. That is forty four single family homes with a minimum of four bedrooms per home. Um, again, that would impact enrollment at L G N. Um, we have one of the South Worcester Street, which is thirty four apartment units, which is a very, very beginning of Google. But that, um, would impact J C S. We have the potential redevelopment of the Eden Barton site, which is looking to be a hundred and forty units, that's on the J C S side of town. Um, and then this fall, Norton will, um, have information about the M B T A zoning project. As a community that, um, is really near two major M B T A stations out of our Mansfield, we are obligated to create a specific zoning area in our community that would have a minimum of seven hundred and fifty multifamily units. Um, a minimum of fifty acres, so I'm very fortunate to have great relationships at the town, Nick Iafferty, who is our building, um, inspector, um, and then our, our Paul, um, Stephanie, who just came back, and our town planner, he was here previously and just came back. They've been really great about getting us information about the building that is happening around town. With all of this happening, I'm really hesitant to look at where those lines fall and where, um, potentially we could re- allocate grade levels within our schools because I think we're just a little bit too early. And I think with all of this building that's going to be happening, we're going to have to be really careful and having a lot of conversations about what our enrollment is like. With that said, I still think it's really important for us to do the school start times. Um, so our committee is going to focus on that these next few months. That'd be Christine and I doing a lot of that work because all of it revolved around transportation. And so our hope is that we come to you by the beginning of October with a recommendation for our school start times for September or twenty five. So, and our goal is to move J C S in a shift.
I have a small concern about looking at district realignment. And, and I guess my, my concern is, if the committee's leading, it should be at least on the radar, because, because, I mean, I get it, like, if these hundred apartments come in and it's all low school students, doesn't, that doesn't apply. But if it, these hundred students come in and all of a sudden we have seventy, whatever, sixty, you know, because I mean, yeah, you have two boys or two girls that share a room, it's a better. So I mean, I, I, I think, I don't wanna just dismiss the redistricting because, I mean, the committee's gonna be there, it'll be like a subset on a meeting, but I think it just needs to be on the radar, it needs to be a contingency plan because we can't be reactive, all of this happens in these couple of years, we can't wait for it to happen. Could've looked at it two years ago, just chill.
And the hard part is, is really no predicting. So, um, using East, East Main Street as an example, so, um, I don't know the number, I apologize. Driving, go over the bridge, past Duncan, um, thank you, it's on the left before you get to, um, Red Mill. There are, we currently have sixty eight students district wide enrolled from two seventy four. I believe there's almost two hundred, so sixty eight, I'm like, okay, that's not bad, right? There's really no predicting how it's going to work, so I, um, I don't, I'm concerned about redrawing the line and kind of causing a little bit of turmoil and then needing to do it another year or two. Uh, if you know, what, what have to do?
Like, like obviously, you know, the, the bank development on Pine Street, all those kids are gonna be L G. But, and I don't know the districts I'm at for all, we're wonderful, as, as just from my exit. So the contingency is all, all the one forties in that first redistricting thought that doesn't have J C S because you're going to have multiple age groups in on that development. Primarily, my, my test is pretty, other children, L G. So I mean, it's just, it's just, I just want it to be in the thought process, not, we don't necessarily have to write down our, our redistricting proposal, but we need to understand that, well, this builder is really good and really fast, and we're looking at potentially just in the next two years. Then we have to know what that redistricting plan is like.
And we, we absolutely cannot put this off, like, it needs to be right there in the corner of our mind as we're working through all of this. Um, my proposal to say, okay, we're only going to do school start times for September twenty five, twenty five, doesn't mean we'll ignore all of this. But I just, my thought is, I don't know that we would be ready because of the building, to give you a recommendation by this October, whether that wants to. Uh, and it, it's, it's really interesting when you think about it, because when you drive up one twenty three, you've got Elm Street on the left and you've got Pine Street on the right. Most people don't know that L G N is, that Elm Street is J C S and Pine Street's L G N. The same thing when you drive up North Washington Street. You have Johnson Street on the left and Arrowhead on the right, Johnson's J C S and Arrowhead is L G N. The way the line, lines go is, it's very interesting. And I would also imagine it's a very hot button issue within our young families. If you're a J C S family, you are a J C S family, if you're an L G N family, you're an L G N family. Um, and so it could be that we make certain determinations and say, okay, if you're a current family, we'll allow this to continue and, and, and phase out over those few years. If you're enrolling a new kindergartner, then these parameters are in place, and that might make the most sense. That's also logistically, I, I think, as I just said, that Christine probably is a flex. Um, that would be, you know, a challenge for transportation and everything too.
Yeah, I kind of agree with it, so, as we have this community. Uh, if you will, we've already, we've already kind of broken down into subsections, you know, of the committee. But I don't know if just stopping the redissue in a particular kind of sense. I agree with you, you've got like, a hundred units and you have forty kids in there, you know, that all of a sudden now might flip the Johnson Street now becomes L G, you know, uh, but I do, I, I kind of like Dan's, you know, thing. This, thanks buddy, like, like if we go with like options of like, hey, this has thirty kids in it, you know, we're gonna have thirty families that are going to L G now. Okay, these, this road, these two free roads, now we're going to go to J C S, we don't gotta necessarily make that public.
And it doesn't mean that, it also doesn't mean that the committee has to stop their work. The committee, the committee can still look at these numbers, and now having this information may be helpful. And it may, it may allow us to say, okay, we know this planning board, committee is, meeting is coming up, we know they're gonna talk about, you know, the Eden Barton site, and maybe one of us from the admin team should be there to just hear what they're saying. Um, I had asked both Nick and Paul, um, to, eh, make sure that they're continuing to involve us in these conversations. Um, because these big projects have huge impact on schools, and I think that, um, as builder, or as someone on the town planning, maybe you might not necessarily realize um, the impact that it has on the schools, it's, it's, it's like way down here, it's like in the weeds, but for us, it's around top, so, um, I don't think we need to stop the work, I just know, I, I don't think we should have a recommendation for twenty five, yes.
Yeah, I think, it's a good one, kind of looking at it in terms of like, what can we also do? That one, I think, to dance, one, is, I mean, the hundred, the one ninety five Mansell Ave, Charlotte, you kind of, you know, helps trying to trust that.
Well, it's coming now, yeah.
If we kind of take West Main Street, or sorry, East Main Street, you know, if we're looking at it from, hey, you get sixty eight families from there. Other than now, you know, you're looking at thirty four-ish, you know, school age kids coming, yeah, now again, dance point if it's twenty one, our rich school kids and, you know.
And I'm not, just about one ninety five Mansell Ave, because it's J C S and we have a little bit more space there.
So in theory, if, if they move in, how soon, then we make, how, members.
If they move that back, back to the first, it doesn't.
So if they, if they sign up for school now, would it?
Correct.
Because they're potentially.
I, I, I think, I mean,
thoughtful.
Yes, I, I would say that, you know, once they have, or they're in, they have their residency confirmation. And, and I mean, we also, uh, we have very low kindergarten enrollment. There are two years, I don't know if, um, we just have all the work rates this year, or people were, you know, looking at other options. If the override didn't pass. I also know, I also know that the last two weeks of August, we had a huge influx of kindergarten registration. You know, people come home from vacation and think, although, oh wait. But I get it, like, I have my own, and it's, I know how crazy the summers can be, um, but I know that's hard. Like, and parents' data.
Really, sometimes it is.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, this could be, you know, a hundred units, you know, I mean, you don't know.
Yeah, and I mean, this studio unit is the one bedroom, two bedroom, those might be young professionals that wanna be in the training, but they don't want, they can't work at the city. Yeah, and I mean, this studio unit is the one that ends, you know, children, those might be young professionals that want to be in the training, but they don't want, they can't work to put them in. And so they rent them out.
Can we have any agents to like make friends with the leasing agent? Hey, buddy. Alright, I'm gonna need to talk to you.
I know, right?
I thought it is if we connect with the leasing agent and say, here's your direct contact with anybody that's coming in to the kids.
So, but I, I think we don't want to give lost information, you know, this committee also sets school start times.
Yes.
You know, kind of trying to give them, not to eliminate others, that professional help inside, getting this people, you know, so I think there's more.
So a lot of reasons why.
There's a lot of work going on in the committee, I think that redistricting is a pattern. Any comments, questions, concerns? Alright, back to, this is Hatfield for Capitol.
Um, so we want to, this is a very preliminary, um. Plan for Capitol Hall, that, um, this is like the very beginning, we started, we talked about it early. Um, so that's why there's no, oh, turning the attach, which is not our whole goal. Um, so the very first thing that we're gonna do for the second year. Sorry, that about that, but, um, is the second year of our campus place that we got last fall. Um, this will be year two already, so then.
They should be expecting it because they know it's a multi-year famous.
Um, and then the, um, next one we were looking at was, um, water heaters at the high school. This is new this year, um, this past year, we probably speak better on it, but we have two cases at the high school. One of them, um, started to be, so we actually bring it, and we can go in office one this year. They have the same age, so we feel that it's gonna be a better time to back a little bit, so we got. And then the next, um, that we were thinking about was a new, it says athletic, it's another multi, that's beautiful. Sorry, so like the huge bread bus that you see, that we got, uh, two years ago. Um, so the seventy-five thousand, that's coming state concept, it's a little higher, that would be a brand new. Um, we're not necessarily, that, that was kind of overquote, but we could get another use for it against a much less. Um, that idea behind this, I've been comparing and seeing how much middle school, high school, even actually elementary uses. The bread bus, it is significant savings, we use it not just for athletics, for club activities, we use it a lot of that. Um, so it was a fix, field trips, we used it for the Flora and Norton. I think at one point, it was back in May, um, Erin and I were talking and we did her twenty sets in manual. Um, like softball, baseball, field trip, that, I mean, it was all, so. Um, we just simply gave savings for us long-term transportation, so we're increasing, especially some of the athletics, a little unknown. And, you know, going to class, so I think long-term would actually really help us.
Twenty kids still on that bus? Twenty? Twenty?
Yeah, was there anything size-wise that's like between that?
So it's just a regular person with a license to drive this bus?
Yeah, yeah, phone's not around.
Okay. This is my parent, who's your science teacher, and I expect she drives a full time. So those are the items for Capitol, um, I know there are times when we have to present the Capitol, um, committee with items. In focus, just because of their timeline, um, so we felt it was really important for you guys to see our initial thoughts here. Um, on these items, each, well, we are kind of up against, um, that type of people.
So essentially the tech, the tech display should, should already be there, perhaps. And then, so we have done. Our request to. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I didn't like it sort of.
Do you know, wait, do you know the one, when was the last time you moved? Uh, that was done during the project, the renovation project, so they were installed June two thousand twelve.
That's what I thought, um, I, I think, I mean.
It's one of those.
Our parents come back for two of the last twenty-five years, I don't think they make things quite the way they were.
Again, I will say what I said last year during Capitol, um, to you, I do love it, but I would love to kind of see. Color code these things, but again, we have water heaters on our Capitol things next year. It's naturally going from our best thing to the place, I would like to kind of get some of those spots, I think, starting with Capitol, you know, based on the fiscal year. Um, just kind of. Well, truth sense kind of involves a little bit more, so I'll, I'll figure it out some point before I bring it up on the general item, but.
I mean, the sad reality of that, some of these have been here in my ten years. It's just, and the, and the problem, the problem I've always had, and I'll say this one. When I was on the Capitol Committee, I don't believe that things on a lease should be paid through Capitol. It's been there every year, whether it's a piece of equipment, whatever it is, that is not what Capitol should be used for. That should be budgetary. But the problem is, you have these departments with their big equipment, five-year lease, it's forty-five thousand dollars a year. That makes that pie that much less for everything else.
And, you know, I think too, um, to your point, Nick, some of these things, like the, the things you bought, like fashion furniture. The art department, the most, but those have been there for a long time, um, replacing the indoor carpet. Even the, um, paving the second entrance of the middle school. We, we had other things that were slated to go into this fall twenty-five, but, you know, we can read the room, A. And, and B, all of a sudden, when the water tank goes and you know that we're gonna need it simply for the cafeteria at the high school. And the, exactly, yeah, the elevator washer was the thing that had to be fixed. So those, and those unfortunately push the things that would be nice to replace and.
And that's, I guess, my sub, like, we're always just trying to replace needs, but we're trying to get some, something to check back. And again, I did run a little bit of a fiscal time, that's a lot different, but.
Well, maybe some of the six, ten years, we've got some. The needs that come, the SS.
Exactly.
I mean, eventually a water heater is basically such a, been done.
So just a quick question with the water heaters, can that not be part of, um, like the whole train project? There's no, but. I know, I just wasn't sure. The other thing that we thought of too is because it's in the cafeteria and it's primarily utilized by the cafeteria. We're like, oh, can we use our cafeteria revolving account? And, and we, the three of us talked about it and it's not in the law, so, so it's like, of course, right? So it's, it's. Well, we're shaking out those cups, sorry, don't worry.
Um, with five, back to this is Hatfield for circle.
Um, this number you will be working. Um, so we have collected, um, so ninety phones from all high schools. And we got the new meeting last year, um, so all different kinds, as we saw in the picture. So because there's so many and, um, we have obviously wanted to be in surplus, we want, um, to determine for options. So we just need a schedule for both classes.
I should do a proof, some votes. All is in favor? Alright, um, next is update on Vision twenty-two-six.
Alright, so, um, this is a very comprehensive overview for all of you regarding. Um, our Vision twenty-two-six, which was our strategic plan that was put into place. Should involve twenty-two-three, um, and drafted by us last year, so, um, what I did tonight was I. Shared with you our progress updates as of summer twenty-two. Um, and these updates come not just from me, but from Dr. Ackerman and Scott Young. That's where our, our whole team in terms of, you know, what we're each responsible for. Um, so as you can see, we've actually, it's actually really nice to sit down and do this work, you're like, you felt like. All you did all year long was budget and then you saw it and you're like, oh, actually, we did a lot of great stuff this year. Um, so we've, we've made a lot of progress in terms of, uh, full land developing the whole child. Um, we have, you know, active PBIS, education, language in all of our schools. We're a part of a Leslie Trauma Institute since the beginning of twenty nineteen, had over a hundred and sixty of our staff, staff members, student of least one force. Um, during that time, uh, we also were awarded a two-year of mental health grant from the Department of Education, which was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Over that time, uh, which allowed us to, um, research pilot and select our SEL curriculum for students in grade stage twelve. As well as our, our mental health screener for students at risk. Um, um, and then. Oh, there we go, um, we also are implementing the Jet High School at Middle High School, which takes a look at. Um, social and mental health support for students and families. Um, and then also our students at the high school implemented, they had my cap, which is the career and academic plan this year during L O B. It helped them to really identify what some of their goals are, who are right after high school, um, as well as, um, career options. Um, additionally, um, we have, see, so one of the things that we've always done in the past, is we've. Partnered with Panorama to give students an SEL survey, and as part of, um, my entry plan this year, I met with a lot of them. And one of the things they said to me was like, I, I just press buttons and, and click on things, because I don't want them to be done. I'm like, alright, well, so one of the things, I think, oh, thank you for being honest with me, I appreciate that. That we had to fill in the bubble. So, we, I changed that approach this year and I gave students a free question survey, basically. And I shared with all of you as part of my entry plan, um, do you feel accepted or welcome for who you are, do you feel safe in school, do you have an adult that you can go to? And that was actually, uh, really nice to see some of those surveys and sharing those with staff. Um, additionally, and then we have always done, um, a similar survey for staff. And I changed that this year to more closely align with my own entry plan. Um, we have, in terms of preparing, preparing students in terms of academics. We have often summer achievement camps for a number of years. This year, Dr. Ackerman ran, um, two math achievement camps during February and April. Uh, we had a large number of students participate, this is really great, it was four day. Imagine spending February vacation or April vacation, four days in school learning math, the kids were here, the teachers here, um. Really overall, great opportunity and experience for our kids and, um. Great example of how when you're able to work with students in a small group on one-on-one, they can really make some incredible things in a short period of time. Um, so that, that was really on their form. Um, we have spent a good amount of time over these last few years, um, I know. Probably all of my staff thinks about it in their seat, because we talk about it so much, um, is INTSS and really looking at our multi-tier system of support. For students when it comes to both academics and social, emotional, behavioral wellness. Um, and I mentioned earlier, we had our first day of our admin retreat today, where we are looking at what we're doing well. Processes and the structures that are in place, and what is our next step as a team for this upcoming school year in order to help with capacity for staff. And all of that is going to be structured around database decision-making, to ensure that teachers have access to student data that's relevant. That will give them a good idea of, um, where students are thriving and where they need support. And how we can plan interventions to really target those students. Um, I don't want to read all of this, you, the device, are all able to read, um, a few other highlights that I want to share with you is that, um. Norton High School just finished year two of our partnership with P P L Works, where we had about thirty-five staff members participate in. A year-long training on Project Peace Learning, and about seventy-five percent of our Norton High School students just paid at least one unit last year that was called Project Peace. Um, and that's something that we really feel, um, strongly about, because it helps students engage in real-world problem solving. That really connects closely to the content that they're learning in the project, that makes it relevant and practical. And, um, you know, giving them a little bit of a taste of what the real world is like outside of our classroom, our hallways and the way from the cheap. So, we're really happy about, about that work there. Um, as I mentioned, that's for these. Um, one of the other things that, um, we received a grant for this year was around absenteeism. Um, you may have heard that post-COVID, um, the absence rates in schools has just absolutely skyrocketed. Um, we had about close to twenty-nine of our students that were considered. Um, to Dr. Ackerman, and we have a really great community that's working together, um, to help us put structures into place, to support. Students and families in getting their children to school, and also really reaching out to communities. So you'll start to see things around the view of why attendance matters, like, I find you, well, fine, and this matters, bring your child to school. Uh, so tomorrow, during day two of our admin retreat, uh, Dr. Ackerman and Sister C. Um, and some of our teachers are coming in to present to the team on the work. So, um, part of our work this fall is going to be taking a look at my entry plan from last year. The work that we've done around INTSS, um, and, and factors that really, um, research-based factors of school improvement. And we're starting that work as an admin team during the summer and then putting it together to start working on our new district strategic plan. Um, we will likely not fly all, this one, all the way to twenty-two-six, I think a lot of it, um. It's time for us to put in certain things, a lot of this work here, um, came back in version two. So COVID, we had our vision that. I've had so many visions, I'm so tired, um, so many visions, so we, we really feel like we've done a lot of really great work here. But it's really important for us to figure out what are the next steps, um, we've had a lot of conversations this year about, um. How expected, academic expectations for all students, making sure that we're providing students with appropriate interventions. And looking, working closely with families, um, so. We will likely retire this Vision twenty-two-six this fall and present to you our new strategic plan, um.
There's none, thank you. Uh, well, seven, other business, not in forty-eight hours. Uh, I got two more things, um, obviously, with everything going on, given, you know, what we're writing or whatever, we've seen a few things popping up. Uh, you know, we do the, uh, the need program, just starting to see what we're doing, all the great work that we do. And we're supporting our schools, and also I saw today, or yesterday, um, neighbors, as you said, going out, um, about a teacher wish list. Kind of adding on to Amazon, kind of go, you can actually go and help, you know, the Starred donations, uh, to help the teachers in the classroom. Uh, two kind of great pieces that, uh, should be part of, what we do, sorry, I'm sorry. Anything else? I will open this up to, I was gonna say, I will open this up to a public, um, obviously, this is my first time doing public, uh, public hearing, if you will. Um, listen, I don't have two minutes or three-minute holes, I don't, you're here to talk to us, you're very, very showless. Uh, I ask you to try to keep it to three minutes, if you're going over, you know, we'll just kind of give you the thirty-second warning or whatnot. Uh, you know, we're here for you, so I don't think we need to set the issues on a bunch of adults in the room to be, to be quite frank. Uh, we obviously, I should expect formal.
Hi there, I'm Colista Thomas, and, um, I live over in Key Thread. I know Nick, you spoke with us on critical, and the article came out last night where you were talking about looking at alternative fundings, which is to help support this one. And you just mentioned two items, are those the alternative fundings, are there other things that we should be aware of?
Just really a question.
Yeah, I mean, I think that those two are a good example, I think. You know, I think one of the things that a lot of, uh, people don't realize is you can always donate to the schools. Uh, and then we have, you know, quite a few investors who are, you know, looking to, you know, obviously are willing to increase their taxes and whatnot that are willing and able and can, you know, do it. And we'd love to, uh, probably, you know, donations at any time. So, um, you can also kind of clear market. You've got your market for whatever, you know, program and, you know, uh, every kind of like.
I, I would just say something about me that's been on me for years and do a lot of fundraising. We have a movie night coming up. But we historically to Jen's, I mean, we give fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year in grants. Um, that's sort of our scope. So I would hate for people to think that we can cover hundred thousand dollar shortfalls and budget. Appreciate any and all donations. Come to our movie night in fall. It's gonna be long though, just as. Uh, but I, I just want to be really clear about that because I think me gets pointed to a lot as like the savior of the school budget. We do what we can, but, you know, it's not, it can't fill a budget and we can't fund recurring expenses. That we, that's a part of the charter. So just want to make sure that that's out there too. We appreciate all of you for us very, very much. We've been very fortunate to have you all as a partner for a number of years. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Dolak. I live at O four, Newcomb Street. Um, I just wanted to call, Dr. O'Neil, you mentioned, um, you know, that your priority is to hire back the school nurse position if we do, um, get that money, uh, in the fall. Is that, I just had a question. Is that something that, um, everyone on the school committee is, would be in agreement with and in support of? For that, I'm just. I think our student safety is about most important. So as, uh, being in healthcare or when I was in healthcare.
I think on that list, it's most logical. Right. And, and I don't say this trans on minimalistic. We have really good staff in our schools. And I would, I would hope that unfortunately the staff that has been let go with these cuts hopefully find another avenue, another next opportunity for them. Uh, so they might not be available come November first and might find out we don't have a nurse of it. Based on the needs of our students, it's, it's easier for us to add like a nursing district manager versus a classroom teacher or interventionist because at that point you're in school, two months, three months, then it, it, you can't go disrupting the everyday academics. Right. So that would be the challenge to hire any of the classroom-facing positions versus, as we know, you know, with diagnostics, with beating tubes. You have a direct correlation with student safety because those students need a lot of one-on-one attention. But the other student could be in the office with a concussion they got in gym or something. So it's, yeah, it's, that's the biggest priority at that one. So I would definitely.
Yeah. I mean, there's other, that is like, that's what my number one priority too, I think, as far as what needs to be added back, um. And so I just wanted to.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I want to be clear, I'm not put into district nursing, any of the other twenty-seven positions, but we have to look at things from a top-down view and that is the biggest need of students. Of twenty-four hundred students, not, you know, again, not trying to minimize it, but if hiring back a teacher that's only going to serve seven students and, or something like that, or a dozen students. I really need that, that position to go further in the district. So we're not looking at that position next year before in this position.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Brady fifteen, Peter Street. Um, I just want to circle back to some things that Dr. O'Neil had brought up, uh, earlier. So no interventionists and no coaches to de-group the student data. Uh, you said that admins are taking on additional roles to help with those, um, not to mention all the other cuts. So just build it off of what we said, though, like, um, this idea that you can donate our way out of, uh, this or that we can find, you know, grants and, and things like that, um. Dr. O'Neil said she has a concern that we could be right back here next year. So the, the kind of the broader question I have is, um, we're not in a good place financially. Uh, if we do end up back here, are, like, is the committee ready and willing to cut programs further, uh, next year? Um, if, if we do in fact end up here, uh, again, since we can't, again, donate our way out of this, uh, or just sign grant money, that's inconsistent.
I mean, I think this, as we've heard tonight, everything is very fluid. Are we ready and willing? I'm never ready or willing to cut stuff. It's the nature of our budget process works, like every other department in this town. We get a member, we have to stick to. That, that's the bottom line. You know, we can't go over that number. We can get creative, we can chef shop the staff, do some things like that. The creativity is running out as well. Just like the finance. Where I, I would say we're going to have another very tough budget, in my personal opinion. I don't, I, I'm not reading cards or just my opinion based on my ten years of experience. Will it be as bad as last year? I hope not. But I think it's going to be bad. We've talked about this for a number of years. We've talked about this financial cliff. We've talked about all of this many times over. We're already, we're already over the cliff. It's just a matter of.
Can I ask a follow-up?
I, I was just gonna finish my next statement. When it comes to grants, we can't predict those either. There's, if there's an election in November, that can change a lot of things when it comes to education as well. Can't predict that. Can't predict the election. It's like, everything's going to still be very fluid from our budget. We've been lucky that we have very good people to work with us on our budget as far as internally within the school department. Uh, if there's a grant out there they can try and get, they will hold for, as they've done for a number of years. Donations are helpful. We're not going to frequent full meeting policy donations. So I mean, it, it always comes down to here's your number, yet only your number.
And I think to kind of follow up, you know, you gotta be creative, you know, that is easy to say, you know, to actually do is going to require a change, you know? Where does that change come from? This is our first meeting since the other years, you know, kind of went through here and all that. You know, what are we looking to do? How are we going to be that if we are in a similar spot in ten months, whatever it may be? You know, what are we leading up to do, you know? Over the next ten months, trying to make those impacts, if you have, as many as possible. Um, I mean, I think, you know, from, from my standpoint is, I think this whole thing has to start with some type of town law. Um, I believe in order to get the town and towns taxpayers on the same page, is to do a full extensive audit to figure out where is what we're doing really well. This is not just a, you know, public school issue. This override was for, you know, multiple departments, you know? Obviously, the school, not a major, you know, a major state in that game, if you know. Uh, but I think starting with an audit, you can get behind from taxpayers. If you say, hey, this is what we're doing really well, here are a lot of our shortfalls, here we can make up some ground this way, whatever it may be. I think that's the starting point because quite frankly, at the end of the day, you know, we're on a committee, we're five people, you know, you've got the select board and the FinCon, everyone volunteers, you know? We're going off of what our town manager, our superintendent, our fire, police chiefs, the kind of towns, you know? Uh, and then we're trying to, you know, put all these hands and put, see all these cards and try to make, you know, what's best for, for our community. Uh, so I think at the end of the day is if you can kind of get legit, hey, this is what's really going on. This is what we really need to work on. That to me is the first step. Quite frankly, and I, you know, I'm gonna not speak as an extra like a school committee chair. I think this town does need an override probably at some point in order to offset it. Problem is, in order to do it, you need to have the buy. I think what's happened is over the years, you haven't had the buy-in because people don't quite frankly trust, you know? One of that's right, one is different. We can argue about that, you know, plenty different ways. Uh, but again, I, I do believe at some point, you need to get the taxpayers to either trust the schools, trust the town manager, trust the select board, trust the FinCon. That lack of trust over the years, not to mention with all the, you know, COVID and stuff that went on, I think we're in a very awkward place. Not to mention, you know, the, the economy in general, inflation rates and all that, the timing wasn't great. Um, you know, but I think in, in that regard, if we start somewhere, can't see a lot of people not saying, not, don't do a townwide audit. That doesn't make any sense. I feel like that's the place to start. That's where you can get kind of everyone being like, alright, you know, where are we? What are we doing? And then from there, it's going to give us, you know, as a, you know, administrative staff in school committees and also the other departments of town and boroughs, a, a starting point of, okay, where can we, where can we fit in? Uh, I think it has to be townwide. I think it has to come, you know, in conjunction with superintendent and obviously town manager. Uh, I think it needs to be independent of it. I think we need to start there. Once we get that done, I would love to have that done by, like, Jenny. Jenny's already done, um, you know, and then, and then kind of get moving. You've got, you've got to see your role, you know, play. So.
I, I could just add one thing as well. I think, um, number one, I appreciate the support. I appreciate people being here tonight to support and advocate for schools. Two days after the override vote, I had our annual master's conference, my friend, and I had a number of colleagues come up to me and say, hey, really sorry we're here, hear about your bread. We're gonna be going for next year. This is not just a morning. There's a serious, serious disconnect between the way that we fund education in our state. So it's really important, as both Dan and Nick have said tonight, for us to do the work that we need to do here as a community. Because the voters spoke, we do not have the support. It was, it was overwhelmingly against the override. And that's, that's the thought at the beginning. So we clearly need work to do here. But as your elected board and as superintendent, we also need to do work with our elected officials, um, with the mass association, school superintendents, mass association, school places. We need to better advocate for appropriate funding at state level. That's a huge, huge factor. And I think we, we've tried that in years past and it just, we've had people come in and it just kind of, it goes in circles. And, and so I, I think that, and Nick, we've talked about this for a long time, like, how do we make that change? Um, and since you asked the question, I just, I want to be able to answer for myself. Like I mentioned earlier, I don't sit in the seat, feel comfortable at all with where I'm ending my career on the school committee with where we're at right now. I don't feel comfortable at all with it. I don't ever like to make these decisions. It's heartbreaking to me. Because I've always sat in the seat, trying to put our children first. Um, but with that said, and I've al, I've always, I've known Nick for a long time. I've always said this and I've said it publicly. I can very much agree to disagree with somebody and still respect them and still be friends with them at the end of the day. And that's kind of where we're at in this community. I mean, it got, it got bad. It got bad and our neighbors forgot how to be neutral. And it was sad. It was sad to watch. I mean, we've done this many a times before. You know, I, I will always support this community. Um, I, I think that just because Dan and I have been here the longest, you know, work has been done in the past. There's a lot of newer people that haven't necessarily seen it or paid attention in years past. Um, I know that there is an audit done on the town side. I don't know if it's every year or every two years. It's every two years? I understand it's not independent. We, we also get audited. Yeah, right. So it is, it is done. I understand it's not independent, but we also need to be able to profit the money to be able to do that. Right? To, to be able to, my, my question is, is if we do that and, you know, we did have elected officials this year who were, um, not in support of the override. Like, at some point, because we have worked together in the past, I've had meetings in my own home with a subcommittee where I invited people in that we were supposedly working together for the greater good of the town. But in order to do that, people have to be honest. Right? And you can't sit in a committee and say that you're working together and everyone's pulling in the same direction and then you're telling your friends and family, I don't support that. I, I, we can't do that. At some point, we all have to be grownups and be honest with where we're at, right? And so, um, and I just speak from experience of doing this myself. So it just becomes tiring after a while when, you know, people come at you and say, well, you haven't done this, this and this. And in reality, we have. We have done that. But listen, if there's more people who will come on and, and think these are options, then, then we need to find the money to do an audit and, and go from there. And, and hopefully that has people trusting the people that they voted for in all the collective seats, the select board, the school committee and the finance committee is, uh, appointed. But you know, I, I, I wish the best for this town, honestly, as I finish my term. I, I really do. I, I really do wish that we can stay off of social media and just be kind for the love of God, just be kind. It's so infuriating to watch the way that people are talked about. People that have sat in seats for years to do our best and people attack us for it. I just hope to God that going forward, this community realizes who it wants to be when they grow up and just be kind and, and go through the thorough process, hopefully get more trust. I don't know if that will ever happen to some people, but all we can do is our best. So I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Great. Um, motion to adjourn and enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions on school internet safety, not term quote session. So I will start after you, and go ahead, Arby Michelle. Thank you all.